Sir.
I do, yes, sir.
Right, and it's, um, and it's disappointing. It's, uh...
Stable, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
It's very difficult to get it up.
Exactly.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Great. Um, and, uh...
Hello, Mr. Clark, how are you, sir? Got that yellow cut nice and clean? All right. Don't get too hot in there out there. Early in the morning. I'd like to call this regular session meeting of the Caddo Parish Commission of August twenty first to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Clark.
Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas is absent, but he is on his way for the record. Uh, Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones, absent. Uh, Commissioner Gage Watts is absent. Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay, you have nine of twelve commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Burrell, would you lead us in the invocation, please? And Commissioner Greg Young, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
And, Mr. President, before we do that, or, uh, Mr. Vice President, before we do that, if I could make a quick comment. Um, just so everybody knows, this meeting is not being streamed right now. Um, we understand that the equipment was damaged in a blip earlier, uh, and has to be reset up of the, uh, when the electricity went out earlier. Um, so we are streaming it to the YouTube channel, which will be uploaded, uh, to all sources as soon as possible. Uh, but did want to just let y'all know in case you get questions from constituents about that.
Do you info?
Please stand, are you here? Oh, Lord, thank you for this opportunity to be here. Thank you, oh, Lord, for all the things that you're doing for us, although we do not deserve it. Bless us, oh, Lord, that we will do the right thing for the people of our parish. All these blessings in Jesus' name, for y'all, man.
Amen.
Veterans and active duty members, saluting during the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance would be appropriate, should you wish to do so. All others, please recite with your hands over your hearts, and we ask that everyone please remember POWs, MIA's, as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell and Commissioner Young. Uh, next order of business, please, Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir, that brings us to agenda additions, where you do have one potential agenda addition today. This is an item that was recommended by the, um, by the Juvenile Justice Committee the other day, and those minutes are attached. Uh, it's, uh, Resolution Thirty-four Twenty Twenty-five, a resolution urging and requesting the state of Louisiana to simplify the process of obtaining a protective order and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. So, um, that is, uh, the only item that I'm aware of, under potential agenda additions.
I, I don't have any. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing up, uh, for anyone that would like to speak in favor or against this being added to the agenda. Public hearing is now open. Seeing the hearing non-closed, we'll vote on the agenda addition.
And that item, uh, it will be added, that, uh, that motion carries, and it will become, uh, let's see, number, uh, eighteen point two is where that will find itself on the agenda today.
Eighteen point two.
That is correct. And for the record, Commissioner Thomas is now in attendance, and you're at, uh, ten of twelve present. Uh, that brings us to public comments, uh, citizens' comments, where, uh, we have, uh, citizens who would like to speak have up to three minutes on any issue, uh, other than pending zoning items. Um, and we, I believe, have one request, is all that we have received at this point.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Robert Wynden. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, and you may proceed, once you finish that.
Robert Wynden, forty-seven, forty-eight Rice Road, Shreve, Louisiana, seven-one-one-one-nine. I, I, I'm here today to comment on the workshop that was done Monday. Uh, it is concerning the, uh, ordinance that was on, on, on the agenda, the sixty-five, fifty-eight ordinance. And, uh, what happened, we had some people here for it, but they were overlooked. Uh, we had cards in the box, but, uh, they missed it some kind of way, so we didn't get a chance to make any comments on the ordinance. And there are a couple of things I would like to, uh, bring up about the ordinance. I, I don't know if this is going to do any good. The, the way it is now, the ordinance is done sporadic. Uh, we have where some neighborhoods, you might find that you're going to have to, uh, get a variance for a mobile home, some you don't. So I, I think it needs to be consistent if they're going to, you know, use the ordinance. Another, uh, thing was, one speaker who was living in a mobile home, and she was complaining about three mobile homes around her. So, I, I mean, it's, it's a problem, and I think we need to go ahead and address this. Uh, you had, uh, a salesman from Baton Rouge that, uh, distributed some, uh, pictures of mobile homes and homes, and was asking you to distinguish between them. The thing about that is, five years from now, the mobile home in the, uh, house, if you had him appraised, you would find out the mobile home had depreciated in value, whereas the home had appreciated in value. Another thing I would like to bring up, if I buy a lot in a mobile home park, I can't build a house without an variance. So I don't see how you're, you're making a difference with the mobile home when, in a mobile home park, you need a variance. That's just some of the comments that we wanted to bring up about that ordinance.
Okay, thank you, sir. We do have that for the record, and, uh, we'll take that in consideration. Are there any more citizens? Okay, that was it. Uh, next order of business, please.
Okay, that brings us to President's Report. Oh, I'm sorry, it does not. That brings us to visitors, uh, where we don't have any scheduled visitors today, uh, but that we are now under adopting regular session minutes, and you may have a, um, a visit that is part of the administration response in a moment, but, uh, just wanted to clarify that.
Entertaining a motion to, well, no, visitors, uh, where we adopted the minutes of the regular, of the regular session minutes. Do I get a motion? Moved by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. John Paul Young. In the discussion, seeing the hearing non, we vote, please.
And that motion carries with, uh, ten in support, none in opposition, uh, and brings us now to special resolutions. You have eight, uh, you have six items under special resolutions today, uh, that I am aware of, none of these are being presented during the meeting today, but they are all attached, uh, for your review. Would you like me to start just with the first one, or?
Are there any persons present to receive any of the resolutions in person?
Not that I am aware of.
Uh, Mr. Young, John Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, um, englovo and adopt, uh, item eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, eight point five, and eight point six, which is all of the special resolutions.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. John Paul Young, seconded by Mr. Victor Thomas. In the debate, a discussion relative to the motion. All in favor, may vote, or against.
Thank you very much. Those passed with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent, and, uh, we do have printed copies, if anybody does, uh, plan on presenting any of those at a later date and wants to pick up a copy. Uh, that brings us to Communicating Committee reports, where the first item is an administrative response to information requests from commissioners.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, the first order of business, Commissioner Burrell. Administrator Bryant did reach out to AT&T to find out about the information, and we're awaiting that response. We'll bring it to you as soon as we can. Um, we have here, Mr. Michael Corbin was asked, I believe, to talk about the Pay As You Go program, and so he was going to come up to let you know about that.
And in interest of time, as Mr. Corbin makes his way up, uh, I just wanted to draw your attention to a clerk's note that's on the agenda, um, just letting, reminding you that on September the twelfth, you'll have, um, your Tax Board of Appeals, and the tax assessor will be joining us during the September fourth regular session meeting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Michael Corbin, External Affairs Manager for SWEPCO. Um, Madam President had asked me to come up and, uh, speak today. Earlier this week, I emailed you all information about a new program that we rolled out Monday, uh, to, um, help our customers keep the lights on, and, uh, I wanted to tell you a little bit about that. It's called Pay As You Go. Uh, if, it is basically a virtual gift card. Uh, if, who's it for? If somebody does not receive income, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, they work by the job and they get paid, uh, they can put money on this account ahead of time, and then it deducts at midnight each night, uh, depending on what their electrical usage is. It's just another tool, along with, um, payment arrangements, um, with, um, LaHeep assistance twice a year, and with, uh, a payment deferment that our customers can sometimes qualify for. Um, we discovered through our research, there were certainly a lot of young customers who aren't paid in traditional ways, and they could use this. The other thing that's, that is going to be very helpful is customers who are chronic late payers or have outstanding balances and can't make the payment to get the power back on and get their account cleared. They can do Pay As You Go. Twenty percent of the money they put on their account goes toward their past due balance. Eighty percent goes toward their usage each day. When you sign up for this program, um, you don't, you don't actually have a card, uh, but we talk you through it, we have professionals, but this is all that they do, is, is get people qualified for it and signed up. You will elect to either receive a text or an email daily that says, this is what was in your account yesterday, here is your electrical usage, here's what's in your account, uh, today, and here's how long we think, based on your usage, how many days this is going to last. Uh, it's, it's, um, we've had good reception to it so far. Um, it costs forty dollars to open it and enroll the first time, and you can refill your account at any of our payment locations or online. So, uh, after this meeting, uh, when I get back to the office, I'm going to email you all a one-pager that you can share with constituents, you can email it out, if you do a newsletter, has a QR code, you just hold your phone up to it, and it gives you, uh, more information about, about the program. They can, anyone can also call one eight-hundred-nine-six-seven-seven-seven-five-four, and they'll go directly to an agent who can help them with this. So, uh, with that, I will pause and see if there's, anybody has any questions or anything that I was not clearing.
Okay. Commissioner Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Corbin, first of all, I think, you know, my reading of this program has sounded really good. The only question I have at this particular time, for people that have that, I heard it's called like balance bill or whatever, how, how would this affect that?
Well, if, if they have an outstanding balance, then if they put a hundred dollars in their, uh, Pay As You Go program, then twenty percent of that is going to go toward the outstanding balance, and the other eighty percent is protected to keep their lights on.
Okay.
Because, uh, there's also no credit check, there's no deposit with this program, and that's the problem, that a lot of our, our chronic late pla- late payers and people with big balances, you know, they now are required to put a deposit down. Well, they don't have the money to pay the bill, much less have the deposit. So this is going to allow them to have power at their home, uh, and still take small bites at that balance to get back on, on good standing.
And will they be able to do this at any of the places that they're able to pay their bills at now, is this?
They, they can go to any current payment location and, and recharge the card, they can use swepco.com, they can call the eight-hundred number that I gave out, and, um, they can go, uh, use the SWEPCO app to do it as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I see no one else on the board. Uh, thank you, Mr. Corbin, and, uh, I'll be waiting at one pager. And, uh, Mr. Clark, if we would, uh, possibly add that into our, uh, our, our booklet.
Into the disaster response booklet.
And I know I will share it as a board member, Caddo Community Action Agency, which administers the LaHeep program, and if we need any clarification, we'll contact.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, we back with the administrator's report?
Uh, we have one more, Vice President. Um, as we wrap up the summer season, Parks and Communication have put together a little video for you to summarize the parks, uh, projects from the summer.
Okay.
Thousands and thousands of youth from basketball. We've had an outstanding summer. I'm so excited about all the programs and services that have been offered by our staff. And we've served over thousands and thousands of youth from basketball to T-ball to soccer.
We offer Brendan Wilson Football Camp. In July, we had the Robert Williams Basketball Camp. We offered a camp that I think is very, very special with Chantel Harson, where girls come out, participate, and it's not just a camp, it's an empowerment camp.
We had a golf program that we introduced to the kids this summer. Had about forty to fifty kids per clinic. We did that every Tuesday, the month of July, and then the bike rides. I mean, we partnered with FAR as well as, um, SB Rides, and we had an amazing turnout.
And then we go into taking it to the street. Taking it to the street is a program where we spend two hours going into different areas, music, food, games, bounce houses. We take the fun to them.
We wanted to just give our children an opportunity to have multiple options as far as summer activities, putting them in environments that they might not necessarily knew that they were attracted to, but once they got involved, uh, I mean, it was a blast.
When I grew up, Parks and Recreation was just rolling a couple of basketballs out in the gym, and, uh, a couple of ping pong paddles and ping pong balls and pool sticks, and we played for a couple of hours until the end of the day and had lunch. But that is no longer the case anymore. Parks and Recreation is about recreation, athletics, health, wellness, arts, safety. We cover so many realms of society, and being a National Credit Department helps us amplify all those services that I just mentioned.
I mean, after every single camp clinic that we had this summer, we had the question of, when are we going to do it again? So just hearing that and seeing that they actually demand it, and they have a need for these things, is letting us know we're heading in the right direction.
So is it worth it, the time that we put into it? Yes, because you never know what child is waiting just to hear some of those encouraging words. It may have been the worst morning when they woke up, but by the end of the day, to hear, you are great, you're awesome, this and that, it's keeping them off the streets and giving them something positive, something encourageable.
It is a challenge, but it's a needed challenge that, that our staff can handle. We're small in number, but, uh, we're large when it comes to offering programs and services on a high level. We think that we are, are key, our platform for bringing quality of life to Caddo Parish, so there's no other staff that can do this like Caddo Parish Parks and Recreation Department staff. We work, so you can play.
That's everything, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, are there any, any requests from commissioners of the administration? Okay, next order, please.
Okay, uh, did you have a, would that, uh, also communicates, if there are no communicates on the board? I'm not sure.
Any communicates, communicate. Let's see, we have Mr. John Paul Young. Anyone else? Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um, I want to thank our Parks Department for that great video and for all the work they did this summer. It looks like you had a fantastic summer. Can I ask, how many kids went through our programs this summer? Do you have a rough number?
Between ten, thirteen thousand.
Between ten and thirteen thousand?
Yeah, ten to thirteen thousand.
Individual kids, or some of them repeated across other programs?
Some are repeat, and...
Okay.
But, uh, no, we have, we have a little over thirty thousand kids at Caddo Parish Schools.
Right.
So we'll, we'll, from ten to fifteen...
About one out of three kids from our public schools...
Yes.
Went through Caddo Parish Parks and Recreation. I think that's amazing.
Yes.
Way to go.
Still, still got to Labor Day.
Awesome.
Summer's officially over, Labor Day weekend, so...
Awesome. Well, that is wonderful to hear, I appreciate your work so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want the public to know that we, uh, spend time and money giving kids productive stuff to do, especially during the summer, and maybe that is part of the reason that our juvenile system is not currently overflowing. Thank you.
Commissioner Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just wanted to share with the community, uh, on Monday, August the twenty-fifth, at Southern Hills Community Center, we will have a pickleball demonstration, uh, for kids aged eight to eighteen, from like five to six-thirty. Uh, then we will be doing a meeting from six to seven in the actual, uh, center. And that's on the twenty-fifth, then on the twenty-sixth, at A.B. Palmer, we'll be doing the same thing, pickleball demonstration from five to six-thirty, and from six to seven, we'll be inside the, uh, actual center itself. So the thing is, for those of you all that are listening to this, if you have questions, feel free to come out on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, our Director of Parks and Recreation is going to put on a fantastic demonstration and education on what this, uh, fiasco, uh, is turning out to be, that we will be addressing very shortly in the near future. The most important thing is, like I said, if you have questions, please come out, uh, and I don't care where you live, whether you live Southern Hills, Cedar Grove, I don't care where you live, just come out, get information, and go from there. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Burrell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to possibly get Public Works to look into, uh, a situation there on Lake Shore, and that should be Fairway, and Fairway comes out into Lake Shore, um, right there, close to the Old Country Club Marina Apartments, um, in the country club golf course. Just recently, we've had a, uh, some meetings that has to do with, uh, uh, the Hangsville Shell, and...
Sorry, the what?
Hangsville Shell. And there was some map to show that they're, they are actually developing in the urban centers. The meetings that I went to, they were very adamant that they did not want traffic or drilling, uh, if they do the drilling in the, in the golf course, and, uh, in which they said that they possibly would not, but I didn't believe it, and I told them that I didn't believe it. Uh, but it looked like they're starting to build a road out into Lake Shore, and, and where they're building it, it's really at the top of, of crest of, of a hill, and I know I lived there, coming out of the, coming out of my subdivision, uh, people almost get hit on that, on that hill. So I want Public Works to identify what that is, and, and if they are getting ready to do something, maybe we need to, uh, look at that before that happens. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All righty. Mr. John Paul Young, again?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, something that Commissioner Burrell said reminded me of something that somebody had brought up in my district relating to fracking. There's a sand business on, uh, Sev- East Seventieth Street, maybe technically in Bossier Parish, but they use Caddo Parish roads to move the sand, and he said that at, um, East Seventieth and Dixie Garden Drive, and maybe it's Burt Coons, where they all sort of intersect, a lot of trucks go through there, and he called them belly dump trucks, as opposed to the boxes that carry the sand, and that they spill a lot of sand, and some of them are covered on the top with tarps that are very torn, so the sand just comes out and gets in the road, and he thinks maybe they're also too heavy. And I wondered, um, Mr. Walker, do we have somebody who took Chuck Wilson's job to like check on the weight of trucks and stuff like that?
That's a position I believe we are filling currently.
Okay.
But, but, uh, Mr. Bedgood is here to give us...
This is the time to get away with it.
Some better information.
Uh, we have a CVU officer that does our roads for the overweight loads.
Okay.
But being that it's Seventieth Street, the state has their own enforcement for that.
Okay.
So we can reach out to them, and they can check that, because we don't, we don't do their roads.
Well, so it's, um, yeah, it's right at, you know, the, um, entrance into Dixie Garden at Seventieth. That's where they see them all the time.
Right, I know where I...
So if you could have the state enforcement check that out...
I'll reach out to them and remind them.
Thank you very much.
Just like to state that our President's absence is due to, I think she is a recipient of a fifty under fifties honorarium today over at the Bossier Civic Center. So I want to congratulate her on that, very deserving. And I'm hoping they come up with a seventy under fifty. Might hit somebody. As we come up with the two issues relative to Mr. Burrell, Mr. Young, who chairs our Natural Resources Committee? Okay, well, I think this would be a point in time that we might need to convene relative to those issues. Plus, just received an email from our Louisiana Parish Government Association, Mr. Guy Cormier. There's a notice that the Department of Energy and Natural Resources has proposed regulation on decommissioning and financial security for solar facilities. And that may be something that we should explore in conjunction with those issues on our committee.
Clark, would you please reach out to me with a couple of days, or we might get together for Natural Resources? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I forwarded that email to you. I don't know if they... I know it just had my name on it.
I believe I did see that.
You got it? Okay. All right. Okay, I see no more communications and reports.
Okay.
Next order, please.
Brings us to President's Report. Did you have a President's Report today?
No, sir.
Okay. We have no public hearing on zoning ordinances or cases, or any of those. I'm sorry. We do have a public hearing on ordinances or final passage. We do not have any zoning ordinances or zoning ordinances, public hearings. Our public hearings for ordinance number sixty-five fifty-four is an ordinance amending and reenacting section thirty-five dash one of the Caddo Parish Code of Ordinances pertaining to schedule of licenses and fees and otherwise providing with respect thereto. The next is a public hearing for ordinance number sixty-five fifty-five of twenty-twenty-five. It's an ordinance to amend ordinance sixty-five forty-one of twenty-twenty-five and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is a ordinance, a public hearing for ordinance number sixty-five fifty-six of twenty-twenty-five. That's an ordinance to close and abandon or release a portion of the fifteen-foot-wide utility servitude on Lot Twenty-two of the Walden Ferry subdivision unit number two in section twenty-eight, township seventeen north, range sixteen west in the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That is in District Twelve. And the final item for public hearing today is ordinance sixty-five fifty-seven of twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance to authorize the lease of the flood acquisition property located at seventy-five thirty-three West Lake Shore Drive in Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and otherwise provide with respect thereto in District One.
Public hearing is now open for the ordinances that were just read. If there's anyone in the audience that want to speak in favor of or against either of those ordinances, please come forward. So you're in the hearing, no one? Public hearing's closed. Next item, Mr. Clark?
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. President. Was this... Mr. Clark, are these ordinances for final passage or ordinances for public hearing? And on my agenda, they're...
Public hearing and final passage.
Oh, so we're doing final passage today also?
They're... Yeah, now that they've had a public hearing, they're eligible for final passage.
Okay. Are they in another section of the agenda, or is this the only section where they appear?
They're not on our agenda, section twelve.
Section twelve, okay. They're advertised, and they would be the section twelve, and then section fifteen is the section for final passage.
Yeah, it looks like just the numbering is a little messed up.
Okay, we'll correct that.
Gotcha. But we can still... I can still make a motion to adopt them. Yes, okay. So now that my point of order is over, Mr. President, I do have a motion to make.
Go ahead.
I would like to englobo and adopt items, I believe it should be fifteen point one, fifteen point two, fifteen point three, fifteen point four, ones that were just read, although on our agenda, they're numbered fourteen.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Quackman. Any discussion?
I was hoping that we could discuss fourteen point one individually.
That's fine.
The roiter to the fees.
Do you want to discuss it separately from the englobo?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay, so I would like to englobo and adopt fourteen point two, fourteen point three, and fourteen point four, or fifteen, if that's the proper numbering for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Your second steers stands. All right. Any discussion relative to that? We'll vote.
Just to be clear, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman, could you clarify what we're voting on now?
This is ordinance number sixty-five fifty-five. It's an englobo and adopt of ordinance sixty-five fifty-five, ordinance number sixty-five fifty-six, ordinance number sixty-five fifty-seven.
What happened to sixty-five fifty-four?
It was skipped.
Skip that one for your benefit.
Individually.
Yeah, but I thought...
For your request.
So are we gonna address, Mr. Chairman, are we gonna address the... Are we gonna address sixty-five fifty-five, sixty-five fifty-six, fifty-six, fifty-five fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven, right.
And then come back?
And then go back to yours.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a sequential guy.
Well, the numbering is kind of...
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
We good, Ms. Clark? That's the vote on that?
We are. Yes, this is the vote on the three items that were engloboed, less the first one in the section.
Okay. All righty.
And that carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. And that remains on this section of the agenda, is ordinance sixty-five fifty-four, which is an ordinance amending and reenacting section thirty-five dash one of the Caddo Parish Code of Ordinances pertaining to the schedule of licenses and fees and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Move. Motion by Mr. Ack?
No, no, I'm sorry. I have a request to speak.
I know, but we need to put it on the floor. Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. John Paul Young. Mr. Thomas, any discussion?
No, now I'll defer to Commissioner Atkins.
Mr. Young, second there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wesley, could you please come up and tell us about this fee schedule? The law... I know I'm not asking you to take us through every single one, but kind of the logic behind it and what impact this will have in the real world.
Okay. As you can see, we have recommended a fee schedule for the Parks and Recreation Department. I guess six years ago when I came, I think there were only two items on the fee, Ronald Walter B. Jacobs, the pavilion, as well as a softball field. Since then, you know, we've expanded our programs and services throughout Caddo Parish, Little Leagues, Adult Leagues. We're partnering with all kinds of sports and recreation rights holders throughout Caddo Parish. And we are just establishing some standard fees that are compatible to other Parks and Recreation Departments, from Bossier Parks to SPAR to Longview, Little Rock. So these are just some basic standard fees that will, at the same time, give the Parks Departments revenue, as well as provide some... These are some nominal fees, from Little League all the way to people wanting to use the fields, pavilions, Walter B. Jacobs Nature Center, just standard fees to rent if you want to do a wedding, if you want a corporate retreat, from admission fees. These are all the fees and the fee, recommended fees that we submitted to the administration.
Drive the floor? Thank you, sir. You know, I don't have a problem with charging meaningful fees for meaningful events like a wedding, where you've got a big venue and it takes a lot of effort and consumes a large space, but we really want to make people pay a hundred dollars to use, to play frisbee golf, for example, or, you know, and who is gonna collect these fees?
Yeah, you gotta... The tournament director is making money, because people are registering and paying fees to pay the tournament. So this is basically, the tournament director has to pay this fee to use our course, because he's making money by the people who are participating.
So if someone wants to just go out and play?
They want to go out and play, they go out and play. But if they want to host a tournament at our ball field, host a tournament at our golf course, they have to pay to use that, because they are making revenue off the parish.
And like, when someone wants to rent the pavilion for four hours?
Yeah, as you know, we've upgraded all of our parks. We got brand-new playground equipment, shade structures, pavilions, there are a lot of...
How do they pay you... How do they pay us, pardon me?
Well, they call the office, and they tell us they want to use Pavilion Three for a half a day or a full day for a family reunion. They want a reserve, and we'll go out there, and they'll pay the fee, and we'll reserve that pavilion for them for that time that they've requested. They pay us, and they're allowed to use the pavilion.
If I may just add to that, also with the...
Who are you, Mike? I'm close.
I got it turned over. Okay, can y'all hear me now?
No, I don't think it's...
Okay, because I don't really have a mic, per se. So as y'all all know, the Parks Village is not even a meal. And so they bring in enough to cover operations prior to all the extra things that they've been doing. We can cover that, but over time with costs and things, and so you have an influx of programming that to keep it to the standard, there is a nominal fee. But the most important thing about the fee, like for the pavilion or for other things, we found that once someone wants to reserve the pavilion, but then they don't show up. And so these fees are nominal. Somebody wants to participate in football camp, and we only have thirty. So you take a spot, but then you don't show up. People tend to show up and participate and don't keep others from participating if they put a nominal fee to it. This is outside the tournaments. So if we're asking someone to pay fifty dollars for the pavilion, Parks Department has literally held up the pavilion and kept it from use from anyone else, and then they don't show up, and so now nobody's using the pavilion. So it also puts a little skin in the game for the people that are reserving these minimal spots that have become very, very sought after because of the kind of programs, because of the facilities that we have now. And so it became apparent to us that we're gonna have to offer, ask for some sort of payment so they actually show up. Is that... And then our village is only... It only brings in a little under two million dollars. And so we have a very small village, and it just helps offset some of these costs, because now that we had for a long time the summer feeding program, and so we got the kids accustomed to getting meals, and now without that grant, you see those kind of things. And so it just puts a little skin in the game for the people that participate, is all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. John Paul Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed, so to me, it looks like most of these fees are very, very small. Some of them are eight dollars, some of them are five dollars, and the big ones, which like a hundred twenty-five dollars, or two hundred dollars, or even twenty-five hundred dollars, are all to claim the use of a parish facility and exclude everyone else from it, like you're renting the whole thing. Is that your understanding, too?
Yes, if they want to use PBS pinch bag, new baseball field for a tournament that weekend, they will contact us to see if the field is available. The field is available, we would potentially put them in for use of the field that weekend, okay? They will pay the rate, whatever the mention rate is, and they will have exclusivity of that field for that weekend, okay? And because they paid for it. And other than that, we keep that revenue for that weekend, because they are... They may have, say, they may have ten teams, ten teams may have to pay two hundred dollars per team to actually play that weekend. So the tournament director will be paying us to use those fields.
Okay. I think that seems fair. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I can't recall which of the committees that you presented these fee changes to.
Long range.
It was long range. Right, and as I recall, we had some exhaustive conversations, kind of like line by line. Is that pretty much the consensus?
Concur.
Now, you've had the opportunity to survey some of the other regional parks and what they were charging for comparable type of services and activities. In your professional opinion, and how long have you been in the Parks and Recreation business?
Twenty-five, twenty-six years.
Twenty-five years. I just want to get that in the record.
Yes.
That you served the city of Shreveport for a number of years, maybe like nineteen, almost twenty years, you've been Parks and Recreation Director here. So I guess I want to ask you, in your professional opinion, would you rate these fee increases as below what other Parks and Recreation, right, in this region, average or above what everybody else is charging?
Average, average for Walter B. Jacobs, below for everything else. I mean, Recreation Sports Program, ten dollars for a kid, that's... I mean, but Walter B. Jacobs, because we have a twenty million dollar state-of-the-art facility and a lot of amenities that come with that, but we compare that to other state-of-the-art facilities that are compatible to Walter B. Jacobs. Couple of facilities out of Arkansas, Breck has a nature's facility that's similar in Baton Rouge, National Credit Parks Department also. So we, you know, it was easy, because we already have relationships with these Parks Departments, so they just kind of sent... We looked at the private sector, what the private sector was doing as far as renting facilities and things, and we're well below the private sector for sure.
Right. Well, those who, you know, kind of pay attention to my philosophy would understand very quickly that I don't think that, I don't think in this current time and space that we find ourselves in, the taxpayers are very enthusiastic about paying more taxes. I think that's pretty much a consensus view, not just my view. And so I'm a very strong advocate of projects that pay for themselves. In other words, if I want to go to the boat launch and launch my boat up there at Caddo, at Caddo Lake, and want to have that little pavilion, I'm not asking you to pay my way. I'm willing to pay the fees. I like these ideas where the people who use the services, they decide that they're gonna pay for them, and the people who are not interested in that, why burden them with it? That's just my baseline philosophy. Of course, you know, there's some flexibility in that, depending on what, you know, what the service is and individual's ability to pay, but these are very, very low fees. There's one fee that if you want to rent Walter B. Jacobs, you know, for a day, you pay more money. If I just want to walk in myself and my daughter, or myself and my wife, want to walk in, just tour the facility, I mean, the cost is a lot less than what it would cost to go see a movie. I mean, we're really not asking a whole lot. And so I'm obviously in support of what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I yield.
Commissioner Ron Carrington?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I'm gonna ask Animal Control to come up just for a minute, too, because these charges, it's more, you can stay right there. It's more than just Parks and Recreation. And the thing is, and the reason I asked them to come up is to talk about theirs. And let me share this, as the Chair of the Long Range Committee, we went through this line by line, and some of the questions that Commissioner Atkins did ask, we asked those same questions. And the most important thing we have to remember is that this is when you're renting a particular space and place at that particular time. But if I just want to go play baseball, soccer, football, whatever the case might be, I have the right to be able to go and do that. Am I correct? Okay. And the thing is, again, but if I want to take my family, for instance, do something special and rent a particular pavilion at a particular location, I can do that and know that, you know, I have this amount of time that is reserved for me and my family to be able to do whatever it is that we choose to do at that particular recreation facility. whatever it is that we choose to do at that particular recreation facility. Now, the reason I asked, um, Parks and Rec, not Parks, Animal Control to come up to just kind of share about your piece as well, because the thing is, I know you have to house a lot of animals, okay?
Yes, sir.
And just so you could share your piece to the public as well.
Yes, sir. So, I mean, our fees didn't go up like a whole lot, but with the cost of vaccinations, you know, um, things cost. Uh, we have to bid out for certain contracts with certain companies, um, and their prices go up. And so our intake is higher than it has been in the last year, the last two years. So we have to vaccinate on intake. That's to have a healthy herd. And so, and that just, that increases adoption fees, uh, rabies, microchip, boarding. So these animals have to eat while they're there as well. So we're doing the best we can and we just have to go up just a little bit, just to stay, you know, operational for day to day.
And again, I thank both of you gentlemen for coming forward. And just like Commissioner uh, Greg Young said a few minutes ago, I'd much rather pay out of my pocket versus getting taxed for something that you all are doing a great job at. Thank you very much. And I will be supporting this as the Chair of the Long Range Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, sir. Um, I just wanted to say that looking this over, the Walter B. Jacobs Park, that the Wedding and Events section, that is absolutely after touring the facility. That is such a fantastic price. You will be booked out for years because of that price. I also like seeing that there is a fee for the photography permit. Um, I think that that puts skin in the game of making sure people take care of the property while they're out there taking uh, photographs. And um, the outreach and birthday party rooms, I think that's such a fair amount, once again, after doing that tour. Um, that, you know, it's like a deposit for damages and also for taking use of that space. So I very much am in support of this. And um, having adopted a dog and touring the facility, those fees are very reasonable and needed to care for these animals. And so I'll be supporting that as well. So, thank you.
John Paul Young, again?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did not see that there were animal services fees changes on here and it was not discussed in the Animal Committee. Calvin, could you come back to the, um?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we discussed them a couple of times. They're not so, so different. Like for instance.
I, I see that they're, they're mostly small changes.
Yes, sir.
I only have two questions.
Okay.
Um, if we're changing fees.
Yes, sir.
Um, there's two that I wonder about what the incentives are going to be from the fees. One of them is intact male permits. So like that's for having an intact dog.
Yes, sir. So it goes back basically to some more, su- support on mandatory spay neutering.
Yes, yes, yes. So like, that is a big jump from zero to a hundred dollars. Why not a thousand dollars? Is my question. Um, so I'm not sure about that. Um, because, you know, a hundred dollars, oh, maybe I'll just pay it and I'll have an intact dog. But maybe it's not a good idea for me to have an intact dog. I don't know. And then the second one is dog cat adoption fee. It goes from fifty to seventy-five dollars. I kind of feel the reverse about that one. Because like, and correct me or share your perspective with me, but if we're making it more expensive to adopt a dog or a cat that we want someone to take away from us and take home, like, is that ever going to be an obstacle to someone adopting an animal?
No, because, you know, we have possibly like quarterly or at least three or four or five times a year, we have all these events to what we waive the fees anyways.
Okay, so you give them away a lot of the time?
Yes, yes.
Right. And do you, do you also have like a program for people who like just come in and they want a dog and they're like, oh, fifty dollars, I can't pay that?
Yes, so.
And then just give them the animal anyway?
Yes, sir. That's based on the length of stay. If it's been there over thirty days to forty days and it has a good temperament, you know, why not just, just take care of the dog? Right, right, right. Absolutely.
Okay. Well, if we, if we pass this, Mr. Walker, today, can we reconsider any of these animal fees after further discussion in the Animal Services?
I think this commission controls this policy decision at any time.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. So I'll vote for it today and then we can talk about, um, are, is there an intact female permit fee?
Yes, it is.
I don't see it on this list. Is it staying the same?
It's staying the same.
Hmm.
And so we added the male intact basically to support the ordinance.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because if not, it would have still been the same with the female.
Do you have people paying those fees?
You do.
I'd love to see the numbers.
Okay.
You can get them to me.
I, I get them to you.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Atkins.
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to thank John Paul Young for allowing us to pull this out. I think it was a, it was a productive conversation. Thanks to the staff for, for uh, for honoring us with some uh, answers to our questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I see no more discussion. We are ready to vote on the motion.
Commissioner Lazarus, it looks like it didn't log here. Thank you. And that motion carries with nine in support, one in opposition, and two absent. Uh, and that brings us now to the introduction of ordinances by title, uh, where we have uh, ordinance number sixty-five fifty-nine of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, that is an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorized the parish administrator or designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That's related to properties in District Three. The next item is the introduction of ordinance number sixty-five sixty of twenty-twenty-five. That's an ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo relating to traffic schedules to establish a schedule for the placement of traffic calming devices to include speed bumps and humps and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Uh, those are the only two items for introduction today. And the next item is uh, number seventeen, a work session minutes. Adopting the work session minutes from your August eighteenth meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Victor Thomas, seconded by Commissioner John Atkins in a discussion relative to the motion. Seeing the hearing on, we vote?
Okay, that motion passes with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. Uh, and that brings us now to resolutions. Where the first item that you have to consider today uh, is Resolution Thirty-three of twenty-twenty-five. This was originally uh, brought up in your previous uh, regular session meeting. Uh, and this is a resolution urging and requesting the state of Louisiana to allocate appropriate attention and resources to repair and maintain I forty-nine, I two twenty, I twenty, and thirty-one, thirty-two within Caddo Parish. Uh, this item did uh, receive additional review from the Public Safety Committee.
Moved by Commissioner Atkins, seconded by Commissioner Carter in a discussion relative to Resolution Number Thirty-three.
Um, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I would just say that uh, thank you for putting this on your Public Safety Committee uh, subcommittee's uh, agenda. I think it was helpful to have the DOTD team here to brief us on these issues. I thought they did a nice job. Um, but I still would like to keep it, um, I'd still like to pass the resolution just to let DOTD know that we're continuing to watch this and are aware and are concerned about the quality of our roads in, in Caddo Parish. The city, pardon me, the state roads in Caddo Parish. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the seconded, in the name.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I definitely will be supporting this and I'd give you a very quick reason why. About three years ago, uh, while driving my vet down thirty-one, thirty-two, I tore up the whole bottom of it and had to get it repaired uh, as a result of the uh, the concrete that pop. Mm-hmm, that buckled. And the thing is again, uh, numerous people on that particular day experienced the same thing. And it continues to happen over and over and again. And, you know, as we all know, we travel all over the world, most of us are through the United States, and I've never seen this happen other than here locally before. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, um, Vice President Efferson. Um, I was privy to, you know, your meeting regretfully. But I can tell you that if you, if you're heading west on two-twenty, uh, the first opportunity that you have to go to MLK heading north, I forty-nine, we've had several, I mean catastrophic accidents, eighteen wheelers. Uh, it's got to be the most dangerous uh, place for eighteen wheelers uh, in our region. And I've had truck drivers and I've had constituents, uh, some of the folks that are your constituents, your all's constituents have brought it to my attention. I'm just hoping maybe uh, this resolution can speak more specifically to that because that's where the danger is. I don't know that when engineers designed that, if they made that radius too sharp. But something, something is uh, radically wrong when you have these very experienced drivers uh, making that turn. And I'm not talking about snow. I'm not talking about inclement weather at all. I mean, people are getting killed uh, making that turn. And I'm just hope, hopeful that maybe uh, not with this resol- resolution, maybe we can discuss this further out of your committee, uh, Mr. Vice President. But I, I do think that uh, we would be remiss if we didn't bring some special attention to this particular uh, exit. Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
John Paul Young, again?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, regarding uh, other Commissioner Young's uh, comment, we, we did have a good discussion with LA DOTD. Um, and we met two people. I think one of them is named Erin.
Erin Buchanan.
And um, I was told she's the person to contact if you have an issue like that. So um, I know that our Public Works guys have her number and I would really encourage you to contact her because it sounds like something that they should be much more aware of than they are at the moment, it's urgent. Thank you.
And, and if it would be helpful, we did share that presentation that they gave with all commissioners. So I believe her contact information is included in that.
That's what I was gonna mention. Did you all receive the presentation that, that we, we sent out to all commissioners? Very comprehensive.
No, what I, what I mean was that.
I didn't have, I didn't have the occasion to sit in.
I know.
On your all's conference, I would have, I would have raised that issue at that time. Uh, because I, I think um, you know, in, in all due respect, you know, we send resolutions like this, you know, I mean, their response is they're already doing this. They're al- they're already giving appropriate attention and resources to repair I forty-nine, two-twenty, one, and I think we need to be more specific moving forward. I mean, it's like someone telling me that I need to better groom myself. But what do I need to do? Wear cleaner socks? Or do I need to shave better? I mean, I mean, be more specific. I, I would think. If we're trying to communicate uh, to the state as to what they need to be doing in order to uh, correct these uh, obvious deficiencies, I think we need to be more specific and tell them uh, what particular areas where we find that it's dangerous or whether the road needs serious repairs. Because what people do when a road is um, is in jeopardy, they tend to go around. I can tell you, when you're leaving my neighborhood in Lakeview and you're going out to, to Shreveport underneath the underpass, there's a hole right there. And what people do when you're going through an underpass, these people tend to move over because they know the last time they went through it, they're, bang! You know, your front end get out of alignment. So when roads are in disrepair, it, it really creates a safety hazard uh, for, for our constituents. And I just think that, you know, this is a good start, but we need to be more specific in identifying what particular areas are that really uh, demands their concern. Thank you very much.
Right. And also we mentioned too that uh, you know, uh, DOTD is under the state auspices. Make sure you contact your state representatives and your state senators. A lot of them are on those tran- these transportation committees. And I for one, uh, I, I, I know what I do out in, in my area. So I can tell you, we got the same, same things all over. Thirty-one, thirty-two, two-twenty, I forty-nine, I twenty, uh, one sixty-nine, seventy-nine north and south. So we're working on it and we can be specific. Uh, seeing the hearing, well, Commissioner Barrea, go ahead, sir.
Well, I was gonna bring this up in, in, in the communication, but uh, since, since you're on roads, um, Highway one seventy-one, Hearn Avenue, um, it's supposed to be on the agenda. It's been on the agenda to, something to be done since I was there. I'd like to get an update um, as to whether or not that project or any work is going to be done on Highway one seventy-one, especially between um, Seventieth Street and Lakeshore. That's a long stretch in there. It's, it's horrible. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think it may be some funding and some projects that's on the board that's in that presentation that they.
But I didn't see it on, I, I looked at, at the information that they sent and I didn't see it.
And make sure you contact Erin Buchanan at any time and she'll certainly respond to you.
Yeah.
Okay, I see, I hear no other comments relative to this issue. Uh, we'll vote, please.
Okay, and that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. And that brings us to the item that was added by the Agenda Edition, uh, which is a resolution urging and requesting the state of Louisiana to simplify the process of obtaining a protective order and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Moved by Commissioner John Atkins, seconded by Commissioner Ron Carter in a discussion relative to the resolution.
Uh, Mr. Vice President, I would just like to say that we had a long discussion about this and that the domestic violence uh, seminar that was presented, they were talking about uh, some of the problems as far as the different amount of pages. I want to say like seventeen, eighteen pages. And what they're attempting to do is look at some other states that's like as few as three or four pages to assist these uh, particular uh, individuals who are applying for the uh, for the particular act that we're looking at today and go from there.
Okay, that's it. Uh, see no other requests to speak relative to this. We are ready to vote, please.
That motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. It brings us to uh, new business where we do have two items today. The first is to consider appointing John Dansby to the Lakeview Waterwor- Waterworks Board to fill the unexpired term vacated by the late Leita Smith. Uh, that term is set to, set to expire three seventeen thirty and his resume is attached.
Moved by Commissioner Roy Barrea, seconded by Mr. Greg Young in a discussion relative to the motion.
I refer to Commissioner Young. I know, I know Pastor Dan is for years and I, I know he's a dedicated individual, so, but I pass it over.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Um, uh, Mr. Mr. Dansby, some of um, my colleagues uh, beside myself and Mr. Barrea may be familiar with him. I think it's, it's very rare that uh, we uh, have an individual of his caliber to serve on one of our um, boards or committees. And uh, I would like for each one of you all and uh, to um, to click on his uh, resume, his brief uh, resume. Um, he's a standing individual. And again, I'll let his resume, uh, resume speak for itself. I'm just happy that uh, we have someone of his caliber that's willing to uh, serve in this capacity. And I would ask everyone to support uh, his nomination. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Seeing no further discussion relative to the motion, we will vote, please.
And that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. Uh, and that brings us now to the next item, which is a discussion uh, related to the twenty-twenty-five precinct survey. Uh, attached is the letter from the uh, registrar of voters who has surveyed the precincts as, as well as their results. Uh, they did find four precincts that are out of alignment. This is not unusual for those who have not gone through this process before. Um, that these might be the case. Uh, and um, we just wanted to bring them to you so that we make sure that you are aware of these and that we can be directed to follow up as needed. Um, it does appear that you have two of these precincts that are in uh, District One that are one precinct municipalities. That is how they have been set up for uh, some time now. Uh, and is appropriate to continue to be set up that way. But we do have to request that they, because they're not, they don't actually meet the number requirements, but because they are municipalities, um, they are allowed to be uh, an exception. And then we have two other special exceptions, one in District Two and one in District Three. Um, so if you uh, have an opportunity to read those reports and let us know, particularly if you have one of those districts in your, in your area, uh, if you can let us know, um, you know, if you have any disagreement with the recommendation that's there or if you have any concerns or questions. We just want to make sure that we give it to you. We do need to take action if there is a disagreement within ninety days.
Yeah, I see no request for discussion relative to this issue.
Okay. Okay. All right. So that brings us.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
Pardon?
Kind of the last.
Okay, go ahead.
I know that we had a change in District 5 precinct from Queensborough, they were supposed to be relocating it.
That wouldn't be part of this process. What this is, is based on the state's, the state has requirements that each precinct has to meet in order to be an active precinct. And when we draw the precinct lines, it's based on population. But when they survey the precincts, it's based on active voters. So it's a little bit of a different measure. And so they do it yearly to see how many people are active voters. It's a little bit more of like, you know, because we only get census numbers every so often, but they can tell who's actively participating, and so they go off active voters to see if it's still a used precinct that meets the parameters. So these are the four that would show low, or they would show high. You did, previously before you realigned your precincts, you did have a kind of a chronically high one, and then you had some of these same exceptions. These are, once you read it, you'll see these are exceptions for reasons.
So you're not eliminating, you're realigning them?
No, these are, essentially, we're just going to say we're okay with these unless there's some opposition to that. But we are aware that these are undersized, and they are undersized for the same reason that they have been in the past, which is an appropriate reason. If somebody has a question or comment about that, but it would not affect any precincts in your commission district.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Next order of business, please.
Okay, that brings us to communiquees and reports.
See no one on the board. Next order, please.
Brings us to citizens' comments later rivals, of which I do not see any.